We'd like to welcome you to our city council meeting this evening. For the record, we have four of our city council members present. We also have Mr. Hilton, Steve Hilton, Councilor Hilton, who is joining us by telephone this evening. Are you there, Steve?
Yes, sir.
Good, thank you. We're glad to have you with us. We have members of the staff. We have some guests here tonight to make presentations. We're happy to have you with us. It's always a pleasure to have you guys here and for what you do in the schools and the community and just a lot of good things happening out there. I've asked Councilor Ellis if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
The audience please raise and repeat the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This next Saturday is the 20th anniversary, is what has been come known to each of us, is 9/11. On September 11th, 2001, excuse my emotions, but thousands of innocent people died as terrorists attacked our beloved homeland. On that date, many became heroes. Many of the heroes died while being heroes. We will always remember, we must never forget. Now, may we now take a moment of silence in their honor. Move on next to our public comment period. This is an opportunity to come forward to the microphone, address the city council regarding your concerns or ideas that you might have. As a reminder, no action will be taken during public comment. We would ask you to try to limit your comments to three minutes. We would also ask that you state your name when you come to the microphone, your address, and for those of you here tonight, if you'd please sign in too before you leave, we'd appreciate that if you haven't already. The time is now yours for public comment. Seeing none, we'll move on next to presentation reports. Mayor's report, I just have a couple of items. One, I was approached a couple of weeks ago by members of the Riverdale, Utah State wanting to do a national day of service here in Riverdale, and that's in conjunction with Patriots' Day this next Saturday. They want to do cleanup on our Weber River Parkway. They are going to do that, they have youth groups out this evening and tomorrow evening. Other people will be out through the week and on the weekend, and the city is furnishing bags. We've got the large 50-gallon bag, Sean, that's got them out to the people in the state, and then our people will pick the bags up along the trail this Thursday and again on Monday mornings. So, we are kind of working with them on that, but we sincerely appreciate their efforts and what they're doing, help keep our city beautiful. Would mention too, I read this in a Riverdale Lions Club newsletter last night, but the Riverdale Lions Club and the Evergreen Lions Club, they kind of worked together on projects last Saturday. They were out, they did Parker Drive, they picked up a whole truckload of debris and trash they picked up down there, but we appreciate them. They do that quite often, and it's usually on a Saturday. I don't think too many, well, people driving by see it, but city folks don't notice it, but we appreciate their efforts. Going to move next to council assignment reports. Our council members belong to different committees, most of them. Would like to give you some time, if you have time, to have anything to report back this night. I know Councilor Ellis does on the...
I'm a member of the mosquito abatement board. We received an email this week that they've found five cases of West Nile virus in people that live in Weber County, and six cases in livestock, mainly horses. So, it pays to wear mosquito repellent. It's kind of ironic that we're in the middle of a drought, and yet we have cases of West Nile where we didn't have any last year. So, please exercise caution if you're outside, wear long sleeves or some kind of mosquito repellent, just to protect yourself. I know that the mosquito board, mosquito abatement employees are monitoring where these concentrations are, and they're spraying all over the place. So, if you run into problems, if you have some kind of activity and you want the mosquito people to come out and spray for your party or whatever, be sure and give them a call. They're really responsive and that.
Okay. Mr. Mitchell?
Yeah, I just wanted to report on Bonneville Communities That Care. We had our Pathway to Opioid Prevention Half Marathon on the 28th of August, and it finished here. It was a 5K and a half marathon, it finished here in Riverdale. We had a really good turnout for that. We took a year off last year, and so we were worried about how the response would be, but it was good again this year, and we had people from like the Health Department and all the cities, had volunteers there, and had a really good batch of runners that showed up and raced in that, so it was pretty successful.
That's good. That's the Bonneville Communities That Care, the Bonneville Cone, four cities that feed into that participate, do that race every year, opioid race. Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Senior Board, Senior Citizens Board, has resumed meetings and in conjunction with them opening up, although prudently, their activities with the senior citizen facility, practicing all, of course, social distancing and whatnot, but they are, of course, doing lunches inside, and they're doing some activities that, and they have, the instructors are willing to be back teaching the classes and activities that they much enjoy.
Thank you. That's important. It's good to see them going again like they are, so I know that's really important to our seniors.
It's not quite as robust as it was, but it's getting there.
Still there, yeah, still good. I know there's a lot of, I know the picnic they had here a couple of weeks ago, that was well-attended. I think food was good, music was good, and, yeah, they're a pretty happy bunch, so especially when they have things to do and they can associate with others. Anything else? Okay, thank you for that. Do you have anything for us, Mr. Hilton? You're really quiet.
Not tonight, thank you, Mayor.
He's actually at Bear Lake, so we have to check in with him occasionally to make sure that he's not in the pool.
The lake is a little chilly today.
Okay, going to move on next. We have a presentation, special presentation from Weber School District this evening. This presentation's presented by Dr. Jeff Stevens, who is the Superintendent of the Weber School District, and Lane Finley is with him. Lane is the Communication Specialist, I believe, with the Weber School District. Dr. Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's an honor for me to be here tonight with you. I want you to know that the partnership that Weber School District has with Riverdale City is something that has meant a lot to me. We've done some neat projects together. You've got a great mayor, and each of you know that, but neat to work on some redevelopment projects, and I also love the things that this city does to support our schools. Brayden talked about one, and as an alumna, alumnus of Bonneville High School and a heck of a football player himself, I'm glad that he stays involved. I've been over to the fire station when you've provided lunch for students to recognize them and do some neat things for them. So, Mayor, it's an honor for me to be here tonight with you. Last month, our school board determined that it was appropriate to have a bond election this coming November. Bond elections are primarily the mechanism that a school board can use to manage two things: enrollment growth and aging facilities. That's the way that we generate some revenue to address those issues. Primarily, this year, our need is around growth, and anybody who has taken a drive out west understands what I'm talking about. As a school board, we have used the tools and strategies that we have to most effectively and efficiently utilize all of our existing facilities. Boundary adjustments, we've made boundary adjustments in the last three or four years at every level, high school, junior high, and elementary. And again, the goal there is to make sure that you're utilizing efficiently every building that you have, that you can reasonably include in a management of enrollment growth, and we've used all the portables that we have at our, you know, available to us, and we're at a point now that we just have to see some new schools. The main project in this set of bond projects is a new high school. You know, it's interesting, as I visit around, people sometimes still think about Fremont as a brand-new school, brand-new high school. If the bond is successful in November, the year it opens would be the fall of '24, which would be exactly 30 years from when Fremont opened. That school has served our county, our school district, well, but Weber, Roy, Fremont are all at and over capacity, as is Walquist, Orion, Rocky Mountain, even Sandridge, at and over capacity. So, we're in need of a bond. Now, our board members have been very sensitive to taxpayers. This will actually be the fifth consecutive bond that we have not needed to raise the tax rate, and that will be the case. There will be four projects. We've got a short video, don't we, Lane, that we can view, that will outline those projects. Let's watch those, and then maybe if there's any questions or concerns or comments, I'll try to address those.
Did you know Weber School District is considering going out for bond this November?
School bonds, which must be approved by voters, are a way for school districts to borrow money to build new schools, replace aging buildings, and upgrade existing facilities.
Weber School District typically goes out for a bond election every four to six years. By doing this, it allows the district to build new schools to keep up with continual growth and increased enrollment, as well as replacing older schools that become too expensive to maintain.
This balanced approach ensures the district can address growing needs while not increasing property tax rates. In fact, it's been over 20 years since the district had to raise property tax rates to build new schools. This is made possible by wisely paying off older bonds while carefully layering in new debt.
In 2012, voters approved a bond to build Birch Creek Elementary, rebuild North Park Elementary, rebuild West Weber Elementary, rebuild Walquist Junior High, add a 10-classroom addition to Rocky Mountain Junior High, build a new gym and cafeteria at North Ogden Junior High.
In 2017, a bond was approved by voters to add a 12-classroom addition at Fremont High School, build Silver Ridge Elementary, build Orchard Springs Elementary, rebuild Roy Junior High, expand the capacity of our Weber Innovation Early College High School.
As the district had committed, all of these projects were completed without raising the property tax rate. The school district is continuing to experience massive growth in north and west areas of Weber County.
And, the district has need to replace at least one older school that was built more than 60 years ago.
Over the next few months, watch for more information about a 2021 bond.
As we build the future together.
So, very quickly, the four projects that the board settled on, a new high school, we own property in the Taylor area for that, a new junior high school out west in West Haven, a new elementary school, those would all be to accommodate growth, and then a replacement of Roosevelt Elementary, which is in desperate need of replacement. That school was built in 1957, and just at a point where we just, we just almost can't continue to keep that one going. There are certainly other projects that could be included on the list. We have need eventually to replace Canyon View Elementary, which is our special needs school, TH Bell Municipal. Riverdale is getting close on that list, but by adding to that list, any additional projects would require a tax rate increase, and our board was just very sensitive that they didn't want to do that. So, those four projects, new high school, new junior high, new elementary, to accommodate growth on the western side of the county, and then a replacement of Roosevelt Elementary, and that would be onsite. Mayor, Council, do you have any questions that I can address?
Councilor Stevens, did you have some?
Bart, how are you?
We go back a long ways.
We do. We watched a few ballgames.
Yeah, we sat in the dugout in the bleachers. I think of that as 15, almost 20 years ago, started doing that. So, that when I get quizzed, when I get home, would you introduce the people that are with you, please?
Yes, yes. Thank you for helping me with that. Lane Finley is, does two things in our school district: safety and community relations. Prior to coming to Weber School District, Lane was a lieutenant in the Sheriff's Department, and also was their Public Information Officer, so it's such a perfect fit for him. Gina Butters is our Executive Director of Secondary Schools, oversees all of our secondary schools, and Larry Hadley is our Director of Human Resources, and I appreciate very them, very much them being here by way of support. Thank you, Councilor Stevens.
Yeah, okay. Now, my couple of questions here. You know, you're, the bonds, what are they typically, 20-year or are they 30-year?
15, not 30, no, 15 to 20.
Okay, so you're retiring essentially the bonds, and then...
Just let me, I see where you're going. Let me just try to address this. When, when we have a bond election, we don't issue all of those bonds in one issuance. If we did, it would spike the tax rate. So, those bonds are typically issued over a three-year period. So, what's happening is you're carefully layering in new debt as you're paying off old debt. So, it's not as though the district has one single bond payment. There are a number of series of bonds, depending on when those bond, that particular bond series was issued. Sometimes we'll get a refinance. About four months ago, we refinanced a 2011 series of bonds, and we thought we had a heck of an interest rate at that time. It was slightly under 2%, and we just refinanced and got that at .58, .58. So, anytime it makes sense for us and we can save taxpayers significant money in a refinance, we'll do that. But, we don't extend the life of the bond series when we refinance. We refinance at a lower rate, but keep that length of time just where it has been. The other thing that helps, Councilor, is you've got more taxpayers moving into the county, more homes being built, more businesses locating there, and they're paying that same rate. So, that certainly helps, that you've got more taxpayers that are paying that rate, and that's what enables us to, like I said, now have five consecutive bond elections where we haven't had to raise the tax rate. And I'll be honest with you, I've never seen that happen in any other district.
Now, I understand you have had the property for, for the high schools, you've had that for, do you also have the same?
We do.
The property for the other two schools?
We do, and that's a great question. In all three cases, we already own the property. There are a lot of times a district, when they go out to bond, have to build in the cost of the property to the bond itself, and we won't need to do that. Can you imagine right now, trying to find 50 acres out west and having to purchase that, or 25 to 30 acres for a junior high? So, we own those properties, and that is a tremendous benefit for us, that we have those properties already.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, Superintendent? Seeing none, we appreciate you being here. I know this is important to you. I remember the last bond election went to some meetings, and I just know how this is important, and do what we can to support you here, as far as we, I'm sure there's some legal things what we can say and do, but we'll make sure that we're there and provide what support to you we can, because we really believe that this is important, and it's just something that's got to happen, you know?
Thank you, Mayor.
I do have a question, if I may.
Go ahead.
So, by presenting tonight, what are you asking of us? What would you?
We want to make sure that policymakers are aware of what we're doing and why we're doing it. We know that often when there is an issue in the county, people come to you. We want to make sure that you have information. We will probably ask that we are able to put a voter information brochure, if you've got a community board or something like that, so we can make sure. We're trying to be as transparent as we possibly can. I think we're in the process of some 67 community presentations, and again, a lot of it is around that, just to make sure that we're transparent, we're answering questions, we're addressing concerns that people have, and, you know, that's probably it.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Dr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor.
We appreciate you being here, and all of you from the Weber School District appreciate all the good things you do, so. Thank you. Next, here from President Jim Taggart, he's going to have a presentation, Ogden Weber Technical College. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselors, it's an honor to follow Jeff Stevens. Weber School District has been a great partner with the Technical College since it has existed for 50 years. We're very fortunate in our community to have a visionary like Jeff Stevens. I can tell you from my interactions across the state, he's not only been a mentor to local educators and leaders in our community, myself included, but he is a national and statewide leader. When people want to know how to do things the right way, they defer to Jeff, they ask him. I think he's trained more legislators about educational policy and educational finance than any other individual that has ever lived in the state of Utah. He really is a benefit to our community. Speaking about educational visionaries, I want to talk to you about Ogden Weber Technical College. We are Riverdale's technical college, so for tonight, it's Riverdale Technical College. With me, I have Bryn Murdock, who is our Development Director. The Technical College started 50 years ago because a group of visionaries in our community said unemployment, at that time in 1971, was just under 7% statewide, and they said, "We have jobs in Weber County, we just don't have people that have the skills to take those jobs." Could you imagine if we were at 7%, 8% unemployment right now? Right now, we're in the inverse. We have, we still have lots of jobs, we don't have enough people, and that's kind of what we're trying to do here with the tech college. So, a group of business leaders, education leaders, and civic leaders got together and said, "We want to start a skill center." It started, if you want to hit the next slide, thank you. It started in the old Madison Elementary School on April 23rd, 1971. They brought in 93 students, and the goal of the skill center was, "What is the quickest way we can give them skills for jobs that are needed in Weber County?" It has grown over the last 50 years to where we now serve over 6,000 students a year. Go ahead and hit the next slide, thank you. In 50 years, our name has changed six different times. Many of you will remember us as the Ogden Applied, Ogden Weber Applied Technology Center, or the ATC. We've been a college since 2001, and they shortened our name in 2009 to our current name, the Ogden Weber Technical College. While we've had six different names, and we've been in multiple locations over 50 years, our mission has not changed. It's still the same. Our mission is to, we build prosperity in our community by creating a technically skilled workforce, and we do that one student at a time. Since 1985, we have been, had a main campus just north of Five Points, 200 North Washington Boulevard. We have 110 acres there. We also have a satellite campus in the heart of Business Depot, Ogden. And that's our BDO campus. Go ahead and hit the next slide, thank you. We now, our program offerings have changed over the years. In 93, we had programs, or excuse me, in 1971, we had programs like Upholstery Apprentice and Retail Meat Cutting. Now, we have training programs in automation, robotics, non-destructive inspection, programming, cybersecurity, nursing. We focus on the jobs that are in high demand in Weber County. So, our 35 programs focus on manufacturing, health, IT, business, construction, and service. We are the largest provider of apprenticeship training in the state of Utah. One in five of our students is an apprentice. These are individuals going to the college who are earning a living while they're going to school, and when they complete their apprenticeship program, are making significant amounts of money. This is an email from one of our local employers hires HVAC and plumbing apprentices. You'll see that they're thanking us for sending a student for a job opening. They're starting that person at $80,000 in the first year. By year two, they'll be making between $100,000 and $120,000. You'll see that they're also asking for HVAC techs, and they say that position starts at $120,000, and by year two, he or she will be around $150,000. All of our apprentices, like all of our students, graduate debt-free. The thing that concerns me on this is the very last line is, oh, stay there, you're good. It said, "Hey, we're also opening up in Boise, so if you have any of your apprentices that want to relocate to Boise, we'll pay them to move to Boise." It's one of the biggest challenges we have in our community, is we export our talent. We got to keep them here because we have great jobs here. As I mentioned, all of our adult students graduate debt-free. We don't do student loans, we do Pell Grants, or we use scholarships. We have a great foundation that raises funds to make sure that we bridge the gap, so every student can attend without going into debt. Our high school students, and this deals with our great partnership with Weber School District and Ogden School District and our charter schools, all high school students in the state of Utah attend tech colleges tuition-free. They don't pay any tuition. We have a great majority of our high school students who can complete their post-secondary tech college certificate while they're in high school. Last year, that saved moms and dads and kids $750,000 in tuition costs. So, what's the return on investment for having a tech college in our community? Our graduates are all working in high-tech, high-demand jobs in Weber County. If there is not a demand for that job, we do not offer the training. Last year, our first-year graduates, in their first year after graduating, a conservative estimate is that they generated $80 million in payroll. That's a lot, and if you consider that they're paying 5% income tax on that, they've got And if you consider that they're paying 5% uh, income tax on that, they've got now more disposable income, uh, because they have no student loan debt to do things like buy cars in Riverdale, spend money in Riverdale, um, and add to the wealth of our community. Next slide. All of our students have the ability to take their training that they receive at Ogden Weber Tech and add that to stackable credentials at one of our university partners. We're part of the Utah System of Higher Education along with Weber State University. Most of our stackable credentials are with Weber State, but we also have pathways with Utah State, Salt Lake Community College, and Ensign College. Next slide. So to thank you, Riverdale, for supporting Ogden Weber Tech for the past 50 years, we're not here to ask you for anything. We're here to give you something. We want to give you a full-year scholarship that you can give to a, a member of your community. You can give it to an employee of Riverdale City, or you can give it to a dependent of an employee of Riverdale City. To talk a little bit more about that scholarship is Bryn Murdock.
Yes, so as President said, we just really want to thank you for your support and your partnership these 50 years. And as we thought as, as a college and as a foundation, how we really wanted to honor that, we wanted to reinvest in our community. So, um, it's detailed, kind of step-by-step information, but like President Taggart said, it's a full, uh, year tuition scholarship, um, for any of our programs for a resident of Riverdale, an employee or a dependent of an employee. And we just recognize that education has the ability to change lives, um, to support your family, to help us build a prosperous community. And so we're so grateful that we're able to partner with you and do that, and able to offer that, um, life-changing education to a resident of Riverdale. So I'll leave this, my contact information's in here as well if you have any questions. But do you have any questions or comments for President Taggart or I?
Yes, President. Um, and both of you. And a couple of things, uh, just by way of comment, yes, I mean, um, you provide a great service. And probably, oh, 25, 30 years ago, as I was transitioning careers, I, I went out there and I signed up and was gonna pursue the, uh, to be a machinist, but it was, uh, the 18-month program was really more like three years because you had to go up to Weber High to use one machine, and you had to go anyway. It, I, I'm sure that's all been resolved and is much more feasible. I mean, going up to Weber High at 5:00 in the morning before the students got there so I could use the machine was, uh, challenging. But anyway, that's neither here nor there. Some of the programs, you know, we need here, police officers, firefighters, and now, I think Police Academy is handled under Weber State.
It is.
And, and I'm not sure what you could do in some of these areas of the economy that are, are being, you know, five, 10 years ago, you had no problems, but now they're, it's a little bit more stressed to get those types of, um, skill sets. Okay? And that's really what you're, you're providing is, is educating people with skill sets. And, and so, um, and, and again, I'm not, I'm just throwing that out there. I'm not, and advocating for where, where you can provide some of those things. As a city, that's, those are areas that we could sure benefit from.
Counselor Stevens, we hear that from other municipalities as well. Uh, I think all employers, Ogden Weber Tech included, we're all struggling for qualified employees. Um, uh, and, and so we, we consistently look at that. I do want to let you know that please come out and visit our machining program. It's massive. It has state-of-the-art, only in one location, and we offer classes from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM Monday through Friday because there's a huge demand. We have, uh, one of the very few five-axis training CNC machines that you will find anywhere in, in, uh, Utah for training. Um, it's, it's phenomenal what we're doing. We have, uh, we are now training, uh, people in additive manufacturing, 3D printing, and soon they'll be printing in metal. Uh, Parker Hanafin, the local, um, aerospace company, is pioneering the ability to print aerospace parts in titanium. So they take a titanium powder and they're printing, and that's gonna change what we do for machining. We have looked at, at some of those things. If there was a situation, um, the Post Academy is, is assigned to Weber State, and we work very, very closely together. If there was ever an opportunity where they said, listen, the demand for the services we are providing exceed what we can do, can you also start a, a, a police academy in conjunction with us? We would certainly do that with, with Weber State. Fire academies are, are very expensive to run.
Yes, and EMT.
And, and EMT, and we, we continue to look at that. Our sister institution to the south, Davis Tech, has a full EMS and fire academy, and as does our sister institution to the north, um, Bridgerland Tech. And so as we've looked and worked with the fire captains in, in Weber County and looking at larger northern Utah, one, we want to make sure, do we, do we have the ability to produce enough for our community? One of the things we don't want to do is have three very expensive programs, and we're training everyone to go to Salt Lake County. That needs to be taken care of by Salt Lake County. And, and unfortunately, we do a lot of that. A lot of our aerospace machinists, welders, um, composite technicians end up going to Salt Lake. We want Salt Lake to take care of Salt Lake. We want to take care of, of Weber Davis and Boxhelter County and Morgan. So we're, we'll continue to look at that. Those are conversations that, uh, I'll tell you whenever I run into our, our friends at Ogden City Fire, they, they have the same, same question. Uh, one of the other challenges that we have, and I, I assume that you might be dealing with this in Riverdale, is we have a lot of our, our EMS, our fire, our public safety officers that are hired in our community, they get really good training, and they use that to go somewhere else. So it's kind of a little bit of a revolving door, and we, we want to make sure we're part of that solution. Thank you. Any other questions?
Counselor Mitchell?
Thanks for coming tonight. Uh, I've been looking forward to this. I knew you were going around to some of the city councils, and, uh, I kept wa- watching our agendas to see what night you guys were gonna show up here. Um, so I, um, I work for a local employer here, and we hire a lot of people from, from the tech college, and, uh, they're, they're great employees, like, we're super happy with them. And, um, I actually serve on one of your occupational advisory committees, so, um, so that's good. I work with Natalie Wilson, uh, in the pharmacy department. And, uh, also, my wife works there, um, in the admissions. Her name's Becky or Rebecca Mitchell, so. So, but what I was gonna tell you, and I don't know if, if, I mean, and I know you're kind of working on that, this is good that you're here and you're going to the cities, but, um, like, I like seeing the, the information about the high-paying jobs that you're training people for, and I, I, I don't know how you cha- you get your messaging out, or how you're able to get the messaging out, but one of her frustrations as she comes home to me is that there's a little bit of a disconnect on the image of the tech college. I mean, she has people calling her saying, hey, I dropped out of high school, but I decided I want to be a nurse now, you know, so what do I need to do? And she's like, we're not like an alternative school, we're a college, you know, and you have to have the appropriate classes. And, and I think, I think a lot of people still think in their mind that the, you know, the ATC is somewhere you go when you, when you can't find anything else. And it's not like, we need it to be like a first choice for people. And, uh, and I know you're working on that, you're here, and I think it's great that you are, um, and you, you're, hopefully you're aware of that, but, uh, I just, I don't think people understand what goes on at the, at the Ogden Tech College. Like, you're a college, you know, and, and it's a legitimate thing, and you have really legitimate training programs. I mean, I've hired people from a lot of different pharmacy tech programs, and O-Tech is head and shoulders above the others, you know? Um, we have five of our seven techs are from Ogden Weber. And so whatever you can do to get that message out, that it's, you know?
Well, well, Counselor, I really appreciate you, you, you sharing that, and I love it when employers say, um, all my employees come from Ogden Weber Tech. I will tell you, my physician had to hire a medical assistant from Ogden Weber Tech because his patient refused to have his blood drawn by anyone other than a graduate of Ogden Weber Tech, uh, because I know they have great phlebotomy skills. Um, it is, it is a challenge. Um, there has been a perception, and we've, we've changed the name. We, we went through a period of time where we were vocational education, and it was occupational education, and now it's technical education. Um, and for many times, uh, for a lot of years, the idea was, well, if you can't get into a four-year, uh, university, then, you know, this is a good landing spot for you, that, that it was less than. And then we went through a period of time where we said, hey, we wanted to say it's an equal path, it's not better, it's a different path. Well, we've had a significant shift in the 2000s where we have shifted to a skills-based economy. We're still growing. Um, we're, again, we're a public institution, we're funded by the taxpayers, um, and our, our enrollment is growing. Traditional higher education is seeing something that's, that is drastically changing, where more and more men are not choosing to go into higher education at all after high school. In the state of Utah, only 51% of high school graduates go into any form of post-secondary education, including the tech colleges after high school. Now, s- some of that is related to military or church service, but even if you look at a three-year average, we're seeing fewer and fewer people attend higher education. So that's an, I think, something that we need to look at. And we found that the tech colleges are a great way for us to leverage the ability for individuals to have really good post-secondary education and move forward. About 20% of our students actually already have associate degrees or bachelor's degrees, and in many cases, master's degrees. But they need the skills in order to be employed. Um, there's nothing wrong with those degrees, they're, they're great. I have them, um, and they're important for me and my success, but we play an important and critical role in, in working with our universities, something that President Morton and I are working closer on. We want to make sure that every student that goes to Ogden Weber Tech, if they want to pursue an associate degree or bachelor's degree, that we have a very, very smooth handoff. Um, as you know, our practical nursing program, students that enroll our practical nursing program, when they complete, the next day, they start Weber State's RM program on our campus using our facilities. It's just Weber State instructors, and they don't pay for parking. We have free parking. I mean, is there anything better? And, you know, and we have the best culinary program. I weighed a buck fifty when I started working there 27 years ago, and, come on, do we feed you well when you come to meetings?
I come to visit, and it's very, yeah, it's very, it's too good.
And so you're right, that perception is, is, is a challenge. We also have a unique challenge because of our location. When we moved onto that campus in 1985, we were so excited to have access to, at the time, it was about 90 acres, and we've grown it to 110 acres now. But it was the site of a former juvenile detention facility. It was the state industrial school. It was a reform school. This is the first city council meeting that I've attended where I haven't had a council member tell me, I used to drive by there with my parents, and they would say, if you're a bad kid, that's where you're gonna go.
I haven't raised my hand yet.
Well, that's not us. That was juv- that was the juvenile justice system, and, and we still kind of have that perception from a different generation. You're all too young to be in that generation. But we have some, some, some memory where people are going, well, I think that's where the bad kids go. And, and so, you know, we've been working on that for a long time. Uh, and part of the messaging has been, we need to get out and spend more time, just like Dr. Stevens said, you know what, we need to be more transparent, and we're gonna go out and talk to everyone. We decided for our 50th anniversary, instead of having a gala at the conference center, and you're going to have conference center chicken and fish, and we have a speaker and some musical entertainment, we said, no, we're gonna go to each one of our city councils and give them a gift. We're not gonna ask them for anything, we're gonna give them a gift, and the price is, we're gonna talk about what we do in our community. So we need to do more of this, and we need to be, uh, have a better concerted effort. Um, and that's what we're gonna be working on. And your, your wife is at the forefront of it, and she's phenomenal at what she does. And I would say that even if I wasn't on the public record. She knows that I only say nice things about her behind her back. But our folks work very, very hard, and we're very, very proud. We, we grew substantially last year, even though we saw a reduction in high school enrollment because high schools didn't know if they were gonna be open and closed. We had so many adults that were displaced, they were no longer anchored to an employer, that were able to come to the Ogden Weber Tech College. And because we're competency-based, we had many complete one-year programs in six months or less, and start not just a new job, but start a new career. And that's good for all of us. We, none of us benefit when someone's unemployed for an extended period of time. Um, I appreciate your feedback, and we're gonna keep at it. We're gonna keep moving, moving, moving until everyone knows. My goal in our community is everyone has at minimum a high school diploma and a tech college certificate. That's gonna kick open so many doors, including their ability to complete an associate degree or bachelor's degree at Weber State on time, and not take as long as I took to complete my bachelor's degree. I just like taking classes.
Yes, if I could, Mr.?
Go ahead.
In my foray there, I, I realized there was a, a group of retired gentlemen, this was a long time ago, who were, um, patronizing the woodworking shop because of all the machines. And they would clear out when the students, or, you know, and so as I, as I'm approaching retirement, I'm, I'm looking forward to coming out there and enrolling in cabinet making and some of these, so I can, I can use those, you know, get some skills there. But I do appreciate that what I have used is every once in a while, I need to get a certificate for like Excel or, or, you know, whatever, and it's, I can go out there for a couple sessions and, and get the skill set upgrade that I need. So it, you know, it, boy, what you offer, I haven't been out there in probably five or six years, but it's what you were doing, uh, every time I go out there, it surprises me how much more there is to offer.
Well, I extended an invitation to our, our, our city administrator, our city staff, to, to Mayor Searle, to the Thurl, Searle, oh my gosh. This is bad when I went to Hooper and pronounced Hooper wrong six times, and they kept shaking their head, try again, try again. Riverdale's easier to say. You're all invited out. Come out, just let me know when you'd like to come out. Come visit the campus. Let me buy you lunch from our wonderful culinary program. You saw our big-as-your-face cinnamon rolls, that's our mascot, um, because we don't have any, any athletics, but we do have really big cinnamon rolls. And everyone wins when you have one of those cinnamon rolls. So, uh, we would love to have you out and, and show you some of the, the unique things that we're doing, some, some exciting things that we're doing for our community. We also run the state's custom fit program. So for our employers in Weber County, if they need to do any upgrade training for any of their employees, whether it's an Excel class, or they need to do, uh, get a new certification, or renew their, their, maintain their CEUs for their pharmacy license, custom fit can help pay for up to 40% of the cost of that training for incumbent employees. So that's another way that we benefit people who are trying to grow their businesses in Weber County.
That's right.
Thank you so much, Mr.?
I just want, one comment. Um, I, I think that any high school that doesn't have their students going there for something, because my daughter did the CNA program, and it was like 20 bucks when she was in high school. And if, if a kid is in high school and they're not going out there, it's crazy, like insane crazy. Because I'm a big believer in early college and all that, that's a big benefit at Weber State, but, you know, like you said, to graduate with a high school diploma and a certificate from you guys is, it, it's foolish for anybody that's in high school, has a kid in high school, to not be funneling them out there in the summer or something to take advantage of that.
Well, and, and it does a couple of things. For high school students, it's just as important for them to try things out and say, you know, I thought I wanted to be a nurse. I, I don't want to do this. I'd much rather than they find that out when there's no tuition costs, than them to do two years of prerequisites, get into a nursing program in their third year and go, oh, this is not at all what I want to be doing. Um, we want them to find that out early. A technical certificate will never, ever be a waste, even if their, their plan is a four-year degree. I'm gonna say this because I have a pharmacist in the room. I'm gonna tell you, I've had the best pharmacists were pharmacy techs first. I've had so many folks from Northrop, from Hill Air Force Base, say, our very best engineers started out as machinists, as welders, as, as, uh, computer-aided design drafters first. If they have a technical skill plus the degree, they go right to the top of the list. I have a daughter that has a degree in chemistry, um, from a very, very fine university, a flagship university in, in the state of Texas, and she applied to an international program that only takes 40 people from around the world. The difference that got her into the program, because everyone had the same chemistry degree from prestigious institutions, she worked as a pharmacy tech. She had practical hands-on app, uh, ability, so they moved her into that program because of that. And that's what we want in our community. Our community is a great community. Everyone, uh, it's a skills-based community, we all work hard, um, and we want everyone to have that opportunity. So I really appreciate your comments and for the guidance that you've given.
And we will, I personally wouldn't mind coming out, but I'll buy my own salmon roll.
Ha.
I don't know, they're pretty big.
Did we check with the attorney?
Yeah.
One more question.
Okay.
Just a comment. I, I drive past the, the, uh, Technical College every day, literally every day, dropping off my daughter, and the facility is beautiful. What you guys? What you guys have done with the campus is just unbelievable. It's, it's, it looks great from the road. It looks great when you drive through. I haven't been on a tour yet. I'm looking forward to someday, hopefully getting through that. But my daughter wants to go there. We live just around the corner and she could walk to the technical college and she's excited. She, we ask her what she wants to be and she's, she's not, you know, a pharmacy tech or, you know, she wants to be a hairdresser. That's what she wants to do. She loves it. She's just, I mean, nine years old, it'll probably change three times before next week, but she's been pretty consistent that that's what she wants to do. And so we're excited about the different programs that you offer there. And, you know, it's, it's a great campus and hopefully if you haven't been up in that neck of the woods, it's, it's gorgeous and highly recommend it.
It, it really is an oasis. We think it's the longest continually-owned piece of state-owned property in Weber County. The state purchased it, it was the original site of the Ogden Military Academy. The state purchased it when the territorial reform school on Monroe burned down. After being up for two years, state purchased that property in eighteen ninety-six, I believe. So it's, it's old. Bring your nine-year-old out to our cosmetology program, let her have a spa day. She can get her nails done, she can get her hair done, and she can talk to the students and she can talk to the instructors. And at, at nine years old, she should start talking to them now.
She's pumped. She's excited for that.
All right. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the time.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you. Okay, move on next to our consent items. Consideration to approve the meeting minutes from August seventeenth. The council work session and also the city council meeting at the same night. Do you have any changes or corrections in this meeting? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve consent items.
Second.
Have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? unanimous in favor, thank you. Sorry I didn't get you, Steve. I should ask you if you had any questions, Mr. Hilton, for the President Taggart, so hope you would have spoken.
I could have interrupted. I thought you all did a great job, you know, speaking the words I would have spoken.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you. Do we have any comments from council members this evening?
I have one thing that I thought of that in our strategic planning meeting last week, we talked about property tax and franchise fees and things like that to generate additional revenue. I just wanted to say that Cody made a comment about possibly not selling the twenty acres behind Sam's Club and maybe having a park and stuff like that. And I personally would be against raising our property tax and franchise fees for, franchise fees for those purposes. If, I, I would like to see it earmarked for the police department, the fire department to bring them up to a comfort level that's just under their comfort level. Yeah, I don't want to say, you know, so they're fat, dumb and happy, but, but to have a comfort level. I know both of the chiefs that are here tonight do not, they have worries. Is that correct? I mean, a, a good way to put it, you know, it's, it's a constant. And I think to go beyond the forty acres and having the twenty acres additional and things like that, when we have those types of things. So if, if, if it's not earmarked for immediate need with public safety, maybe public works, I need to look in it further because I, I mean, it's just a thought that I had. I, I would be against raising it just to have the money to do whatever we're doing with. But if, if we're bringing the fire department, police department up to their comfort level, I know even Steve's having issues keeping people right. I mean, so even salaries maybe to, I know we, we pay a hundred and ten percent and, and have that up there, but if the money is earmarked that can only go to that type of thing, that's when it would get my support. I, I don't want to see it go to, you know, more, more green space, park-type stuff. You know, I spent a lot of time at Golden Spike Park and, and it's underutilized. And I, I just think having these guys have the ability to run their departments without hesitation or whatever would be where I would be in that situation. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Thanks for your input. Any other comments? Seeing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting is adjourned. Thank you for being here this evening.